Good evening, everyone. The Towne Hitt respectfully acknowledges that is located on the First People's traditional lands. We recognize this traditional territory to show respect and understanding to those who walk this land since time immemorial. Today, we uphold our ongoing responsibility and work together in the spirit of the intent of the treaties with all the First Peoples and nations that call this place home. The town expresses gratitude for the opportunity to build a better community on these sacred lands for generations to come. With that, I'd like to welcome everybody to the committee of the whole meeting for December fifth, twenty twenty-three, and call this meeting to order. Adoption of the agenda, council, any additions or deletions to the agenda? Seeing none, administration? None. Thank you. I look for Councilor McGee.
I'd like to see consensus that council accept the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting for December the fifth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you, Councilor McGee. Council, we will be voting electronically, so if you can make sure we set up. If you're not, we can do this one half and half. We have a motion that committee adopt the agenda as presented. Any discussion question? Right, then we'll call the question that the committee adopt the agenda as presented. Please vote now. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving on then to apologies, moving on to reports from administration, three point one, twenty twenty-four budget draft capital. See you in a minute.
Uh, thank you, Chair, just because it's just somewhat of a continuing of our last meeting. Are we okay if we go through capital unless there's any other questions? Because we kind of worked our way through that at the last meeting and then go to cap or starts operating to have that discussion.
Yeah, council, any objections to that? Councilor Taylor?
Well, my own would be that seen as the librarian had to spend all last meeting without us talking about the library. Could we talk about the library first in consideration of our time?
I think that's a great idea, because I have some thoughts and maybe others too, so we don't want you to go through what you had to last meeting.
I, maybe it'll be worse, I don't know. Thank you, Counselor Taylor. And to be clarified, that would be under operational budget, uh, uh, so we just start off with that. Yeah, before we do, just quickly, then we can come back to capital after we finish with the library, just to make sure there isn't any. Or is there, is there any appetite or opposition that just, uh, we've already discussed capital budget in the last meeting? Seeing none, okay. All right, so I'll head it over to see you opening for the, uh, operating draft operating budget.
Sure, I'll, uh, I will pass it over to our librarian manager.
Um, I'm not sure exactly what I'm speaking to.
Right.
Let me see how help then get a page up. It's from the yeah. Private package.
And council, I think for our purposes, it is under VF twelve A draft twenty twenty-four library budget allocation. It's the second last uh, bullet under three point two. Uh, it's the second last bullet of three point two draft twenty twenty-four library budget allocation. No, I don't, because it's a it's a sales sheet.
Yes, through the chair, we can bring that up, uh, and then if there are any questions from from the committee for the library budget, you know, you will take advantage of having Shannon in your fantasy case. And Shannon, if there's, if there's anything that you just want to provide for, uh, for committee or
Sorry, it's just not done. That document center. We're probably going to package it published.
If I may, I think we all have it, um, so just on the screen. But you've been saying we do, yeah, so I think we can manage enough of that, uh, if everyone has that Towne Hitten budget review for the library. Um, so councils, I guess.
Sure.
Oh, yes.
I'm sorry, I don't know where it is.
So it's the second bullet, it's in our, in our civic send VF twelve A draft twenty twenty-four budget, the library budget allocation. It's the second last blue bullet under three point two. It's an Excel spreadsheet.
Yeah, and open Excel's.
Oh, okay.
Where is it in the package that was sent to us?
It was not in Friday's package, it was in the weeks before.
Yes.
Uh, on the December fifth agenda for this meeting, I have it on page twenty-three of twenty-four. It is, it is in our.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilor Sashi. Okay, so, um, I guess, uh, I don't know if Shannon has anything to speak to or just looking for questions from, uh, council to Shannon and also to Ms. Ju if she also, so council, uh, any questions on the library allocation? Councilor Taylor?
I noticed that the life allocation is about twenty thousand dollars more than the information you submitted to us during the presentation that you're all were at council. This amount was four thirty-one, uh, three five seven. It's being changed to five, uh, four, five, one, one, five, eight. I wonder if you can tell us why.
Uh, so through the chair of the rest of the committee, uh, I have actually recently spoken with, uh, Mr. about this. Um, I don't know, Mr. Would you like to?
I can, I can speak, but also through the chair.
Yep.
There was a committee, and I'll, I'll defer to Ms. Marbo as well, she may be able to illustrate course, but we believe, we haven't tracked this down yet, this change. We believe that it is related to, um, tweaking, if that's the right word for it, but refinement of the benefits budget related to the salary for the positions that are approved and in place at the, at the, at the library. So we think that's the only thing that was done uh, tween the board itself approving the budget, councils receiving of it earlier presentation and today's presentation.
Taylor? Oh, good. If I may, on that note, because there was a change to staffing hours and we had some part-time that went to full-time and that or what was the, the opposite, went from full-time to hard time, so that might have changed things a little bit or not?
Uh, so through the chair of the committee, that was a change that was already budgeted, um, in the, uh, twenty twenty-four budget that I had presented before, so that had already been.
Okay, thank you. See you in a minute.
Uh, through the chair, if I could just add on to what Mr. is saying, we have a very unique relationship with the library board because it is a separate legal entity, but uh, some of the items are flushed through all of our items as our GL lines as well. Um, so as a part of, uh, administration building the budget, we've gone through line by line and we've made, uh, we've made fairly large decreases for our labor budget, and this was just due to what we called, uh, vacancy modifiers, and we just thought, so we have reduced that entire line on them, and we, it's certainly possible that all line items have related to the salary, we just benefits were decreased as part of us going through all that process, uh, but we provide a a rock solid answer for council on what that is.
And Miss Marbo?
Also included in the revenue section where it's saying transfers from reserve, that is money that is coming out and to be returned, excuse me, to now hundred and four thousand dollars, but it only shows on one side there. Because it's not going back into reserves for the library, so it's showing it's coming out of the reserves, but it is flowing back through into, uh, reserve line for the town.
So that's why I have the question in regards to that amount, um, so that hundred and four thousand, um, you've said is going to our reserve accounts, but I guess I'm just curious, um, was that not to go back into our general revenue, uh, account being as how, you know, as, as the library was a surplus from that empty position? So I guess my expectation was that a hundred and four thousand was to go into our revenue rather than to a reserve account, uh, can you speak to that, please?
Uh, through the chair to all of the committee, uh, for certain, it wasn't my place to take the liberty to to, uh, make that determination that it was going to revenue, it's a twenty, we're, we're talking about twenty twenty-four in the future, I didn't feel I hadn't received that direction from council or committee. Um, we have to throw sorry, excuse me, we have to flow all monies for the municipality through the operating budget at some point, even grants that are received for capital have to come in as operating and then show being sent to the reserves and then the reserves fund the capital, so it's foresighted entry for most of those items. Um, so the monies, the additional hundred and four thousand dollars was put towards the facilities reserve, uh, it shows up in the increase line from being two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty-four thousand, simply as a placeholder, and so it wasn't forgotten during budget, absolutely looking for direction and will handle it any way that committee directs us to.
Excellent, thank you. Did you have your hand up?
Yeah.
Yeah, Councilor Taylor.
No, if you were to put a motion forward that that go to, uh, general revenue in order to help with our, uh, budget, uh, deficit problem, I would think that would be a good, and the reason.
I would like to put on chair, so, uh.
That's fine, well, maybe somebody else will.
Okay.
And the reason why I think it's appropriate is, uh, the library built up that, uh, four hundred and eighteen thousand dollar reserve during COVID, and that was from salary, we gave money for salary. And it's also because of, uh, staff, uh, vacancy, so it was money for vacancies and staff salary. If we had had it back at the time, we would have probably done what Edson did and used that to, uh, reduce our tax, uh, budget at the time for folks in town for, uh, for, uh, during COVID, we're getting it back now, we're in a tough budget. It came from money for salary, it, I believe that this is a really good idea.
Thank you. And just to clarify, if I may, for me, uh, being a someone on that board as well, um, we still, it there was that surplus, we had to actually build a budget for it because we still had the position. And it's just the, the position wasn't being filled, so I appreciate your words, but I mean, it wasn't a uh, oversight, it just, we had to, uh, it just wasn't filled, but I appreciate that, yeah, that was the intent of the library board to offset that, so.
Did I say oversight?
No, I did, I just wanted to clarify that, you know, that's all, that's why that existed.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilor McGee?
Just a point of clarification, and then, uh, I'm beginning to provide the direction. So the, that full number was one hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars, correct? Uh, then, if I may, uh, look to seek consensus, Mr. Chair, I'd like to see consensus that the one hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars identified as transfer from reserves twenty twenty-four be directed into general revenue. Uh, and then Counselor Taylor, and I believe the chair both spoke to that. Uh, I'm certainly in favor of offsetting, uh, that cost into general revenues, I don't think too much of that, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McGee. Counselor Race, you would you like this, you're in the queue, would you like to speak to this, uh, direction?
I will support it and probably make a consensus request from the results of this one.
All right, council, we have a direction that committee see, see consensus, uh, that that the iron four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars identified as transfer from reserve twenty twenty-four be directed into general revenue. Uh, should be indicate where that hundred and four thousand is coming from, Miss Marbo, just so we're clear.
From the, from the repayment from the library.
From the library, so hundred and four thousand, uh, from the repayment of the library. Uh, Counselor Taylor?
Oh, no, I was just going for a word, but you forgot it, so.
Okay. Thank you. All right, council, any discussion on the consensus? Seeing none, then will we move that, uh, and we will be electronically voting? Thank you. We will move that, may we see consensus that the hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars for the repayment of the library identified as transfer from reserves twenty twenty-four to be directed into general revenue? All right, please vote now.
Not coming up.
Counselor Race?
I'll, I'll put my hand up.
Okay. And
I'm in favor.
All right, so that is carried unanimously, thank you. Excellent, uh, Counselor Race, you are, were in the queue.
Uh, thank you, um, Deputy Mayor, I might need some assistance on this. Seeing that the wording has changed, um, I am seeking consensus of committee to use the reserves returned by the library of a hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars to offset a taxation increase in the twenty twenty-four operating budget.
So will we go get the wording? Yes, my question to administration, the Councilor Lagoon's previous motion that that achieved what this motion is, is seeking is that it went from the twenty twenty-four reserve into general revenue. Wasn't that the intent, Counselor? I guess my question to Counselor McGee?
I guess, sorry. If you ask me directly, yeah, essentially that was the intent, I thought that by getting into the general revenues, we wouldn't have, it would be we have to collect X number of dollars based on the budget, that it would offset that automatically.
Okay.
Yeah, so through the chair and members of committee, uh, I, I believe that can be, that's covered with the previous motion, because more or less what we're going to do is that hundred and four comes in as a revenue and then it goes to reserves through an expense line. We're just going to take that out of the expense line that will offset the, um, the taxes required by one hundred and four thousand, so I, I, I think we can, I, I think we're okay with this one.
Absolutely.
Okay to keep it?
No, I, I think that's already been addressed.
So Counselor Race, would you like to withdraw?
You know, what if this, um, hundred and four thousand is going to assist us in drawing up an operating for the, uh, council? Um, please question.
Okay, any objections to withdrawing the motion or the consensus? Thank you, seeing that. We will then withdraw that. Counselor Taylor?
Yeah, I would, uh, like to seek consensus that, uh, the Towne Hitten reduced the library budget for two thousand twenty-four by a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in the amount requested by the library of, uh, four fifty-one, one fifty-six, and then it be placed into general revenue.
Counselor Taylor? This capture that Towne Hitten reduced the library budget by a hundred and seventy thousand? Is your number?
Yeah.
By the max per?
Hundred and seventy thousand. From the amount requested by the library of four hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-six.
One.
Uh, one fifty-six. And now they be placed in, into general revenue.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor, would you like to speak to it?
Yeah, I have a few words prepared, if you don't mind, please. In, uh, two thousand twenty-three, it became apparent that towns of Hinton Library had built up their reserves historic highs of four hundred and eighteen thousand. Historic highs, because prior to COVID, it was, uh, two thousand eighteen, hundred forty-five, hundred twenty-nine, and a lot slower than that for the preceding years. So a hundred thousand dollars or less. The savings came from dollars that were originally intended to pay staff during COVID, and that one person was on medical leave. If that money had been given back to the town at the time, it could have been used for the town to reduce taxes during COVID like Edson did. When the library was asked in mid-two thousand twenty-three what plans they had for this money, they had no plans that they identified for a significant portion of the money. New plans recently appeared for the dollars that have now been transferred out of reserves into, uh, operational and capital projects to an amount of a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, which is a very large amount, considering that the historic reserve was at a hundred thousand dollars. Even transferring this out of reserves into, um, out of reserves into capital and operating projects still leaves the library with, uh, the information I got during the presentation was ninety-three thousand, which is close to the pre-COVID historical reserve balances. Now, in fairness to the library, they have transferred some money out, we just talked about that, that was a hundred and four thousand dollars that was transferred into reserves. That doesn't take care of that, uh, original money that was allocated for staffing that has since gone to capital and operational projects. In the future, um, the way to correct these type of problems is for the library and council to maybe get into joint discussions on reserve policies and how surplus funds are going to be spent. We have organizations that we work with that have, that have had, um, operational, uh, surplus dollars for salary, and then they have offered it back, back, back to us at the time, not three or four years later, so in consideration of that, I put forward this motion, and getting this money back into the general revenue account or, or a portion of it, if you're not comfortable with the hundred and seventy thousand, would help us with a further uh, one point three to one point four reduction in our very high potential tax rate increase, which is now six point eight. Thank you very much, I, I would like your support for this.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Taylor. Counselor, I have myself in queue, and then Counselor McGee. So I have a question to administration, because I did ask this, I think when that first hundred and four thousand come as a recommendation, my understanding is that clears up all the surplus during COVID and, uh, prior to the, to the twenty twenty-two year and twenty twenty-three, or what, whatever years there were, it, it amounted to the hundred and four thousand dollars that covered all of that, is that my understanding? Any surplus that we had with those, those positions are covered by the hundred and four?
Through the chair to the rest of the committee, uh, in my research for this matter, I researched back to twenty twenty-one, I had not seen a large reserve move into the library, sorry, large surplus move into the library reserve. Prior to that date, I didn't check all of the history of the library in Hinton, just the recent one through to twenty nineteen, sorry, through to including twenty twenty, I didn't look at twenty nineteen. So I can't speak to that, but I do know that the amount of a hundred and four will change, has addressed the twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one for twenty twenty-one surplus transfer and the twenty twenty-two surplus transfer.
Okay, thank you, and I guess my other, my other, uh, follow-up question to that is, um, it was mentioned of a reserve policy and surplus, uh, our board has gone, the, the board has gone through quite an extensive, uh, uh, development of the current board policy, um, or a reserve policy, and that reserve policy, we have clearly stated in there, in the future, any surplus will go back to our operating budget for the, the following year. So there won't be any more surplus going into our reserve funds, they will go back into a general operating for the following budget year, um. So, and, and at this point, the, uh, the reserves we're going to be asking moving forward is only a sixteen thousand dollars. We've got a plan for that other reserve to improve the services at our library. Um, and this, this, this request upon, uh, seeking some, some information from our manager, this hundred and seventy thousand will be in two positions, will be cut from our library. Uh, we, there is nowhere that we can find any operational without cutting two and a half staff, which will then reduce the hours of our library and the services that we currently provide to our staff. Uh, so I won't be in favor of this, uh, because we have gone through this process and, and asked, we were asked to counsel, the board was asked to give that surplus back and, and we accommodate that and we're happy to do it as a board, um, so yeah, that's where I'm at on this particular motion, thank you. I have Counselor Lagoon and then Counselor Taylor.
Actually, if I can defer to Counselor Taylor, it looks like he wants to respond, if I can get back in queue, please.
Counselor?
This, uh, is, uh, going to affect staffing positions, is different information than what you presented during the, uh, both sessions. You indicated that that hundred and seventy-six thousand that was originally given during COVID for, uh, uh, projects was going to go to operation capital cost, uh, uh, projects, can I draw your attention to the information that you submitted, please, and have you commented on that? Thank you very much.
Um, so through the chair to the rest of the committee then, is it my understanding then is that the money that you're requesting back from the library is um, essentially coming from those projects that we have proposed, so rather than doing those projects for the library that we would simply give that back into, um, I guess the, the town's operating, um, budget in the next year, is that correct, understand?
I don't have the ability to tell you where to spend money, I only have the ability to say you, you, you took the hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars from us during COVID. It looks to me like you put it into operational projects. Uh, you know, other people have given that money back at the time and put it, and we've used it to uh, defray it. In August, when we talked to you, you had no plans for capital projects. You had a hundred, of us four hundred thousand dollar, uh, reserve. Since then, you've come up with a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars worth of worth of projects in a very short period of time, while you still leave yourself, uh, close to a hundred thousand dollars worth of reserves. I'm seeking back the money that if I'd known during COVID, that was, wouldn't have been spent on staffing, would have come back to us and go into, uh, general revenue, this still leaves you a hundred thousand dollars in reserves if you wish to continue with a portion of one of these, uh, projects, but I, I can't tell you where to take it from. Thank you.
Counselor Lagoon and then myself.
Yeah, thanks, Count, uh, Mr. Chair, so I just need some clarification before I speak to the direction on the table. So, to start, um, what is the current state then of the library's, uh, reserves? I guess that's my first question, and I just, because I want to speak to it accurately, please.
Oh, I, I can see that, uh, so through the chair to the rest of the committee, currently the, uh, reserves for the library are sitting at about four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. That's not the exact number, that's around that range. Um, with the plans that we have for the twenty twenty-four budget and with the reserves policy that we now have in place, what we will end up with is a reserve sitting at a little over ninety-three thousand dollars.
Right, so I guess, and now I suppose it's more And now I suppose it's more budgetary based, so I'm throwing this out there to counsel. In terms of the whether or not I support the hundred and seventy thousand dollar um. Decrease, and I think this actually answers your question a little bit too. I think it's a bit a a bit of a philosophical question, um, because really this isn't. Just, you know, related to this year. It's about the fact that we have, you know. Getting close to half a million dollars in in a reserve, sorry, the library board. As opposed to nearly half a million dollars in reserve, you know, which comes out of allocations due to COVID, you know. A lack of personnel needed, and that's fine. Again, there's no, there's no issue there. But philosophically for myself, uh, to go to the question that you had sort of posed to Counselor Taylor. I would actually say. If council, if it was the will of council, uh, to support a reduction of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, in funding to the the library board, I guess philosophically, my expectation is is that doesn't change. The library, uh, their budget needs, you know, you still have the needs to operate the budget. Your capital spends, all that kind of stuff. Ultimately, though, what it comes down to is sort of invading those reserves. That would be. That would sort of philosophically be my approach to it. And I think at this time. Uh, I actually do support Counselor Taylor's uh consensus request on the table. Thank you.
Thank you. I have myself, so. I I again have to clarify, that hundred and seventy six thousand dollars was in our reserves ahead of time before anything COVID hit. The COVID thing is a hundred and four thousand dollars. And I have to remind, if we take a hundred and seventy six thousand dollars. From, because we have four eighteen now, we take a hundred and four thousand out of that to put back into reserves. We have that left. If we take that hundred and seventy six thousand dollars out of reserve. Put it into our on our operating budget, we're going to be right back to square one next year. Asking for four hundred and fifty one or whatever thousand dollars unless we cut positions. If that's what if council wants, that's what we're looking at here. But that a hundred, I agree that we've had. Uh, but we had. I don't want to say, but we had a a good amount in our reserves because of the lack of planning. Um, we've got a plan. Um, we've got quite an extensive plan of five different projects. To upgrade, improve, that gets us back to an a regular amount. Of reserves and now with that reserve policy, nothing is going out of reserve into reserves from surplus. That is what got us into trouble and and the lack of plans. So nothing will in our reserve policy, everything will back in their operational. So I, unless I'm incorrect uh to administration, my understanding is the the. The impact of COVID and the lack of of staffing and surplus and all that have been dealt with at the hundred and four thousand. Administration.
So to restate, just to be very clear, very many. I examined the surplus transfers. Of the libraries at the end of twenty twenty. Which was not a lot of dollars. And when I say not a lot of dollars, let me be clear. I'm thinking something in the area. Well, under ten thousand. And then at the end of twenty twenty one, there's a substantial transfer. Um. I didn't check further back than twenty nineteen. We can get that information for you. For council, if that's required, to look at what exactly was transferred in terms of a surplus. In twenty nineteen. Or at the end of the twenty twenty, twenty nineteen fiscal year, and at the end of the twenty eighteen fiscal year, that's of interest as well. But all of that is in records. We just didn't look at that yet.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Taylor.
Yeah, I have a, fortunately, I I can help. Um, I have an eleven year uh. History from the consolidated financial statements of the uh library board reserves, and these come from the. Audited and approved. Consolidated financial statements, which are the uh gold standard for public administration, so. Two thousand twenty two, four hundred and eighteen nine nine four. Two thousand twenty one. Three oh seven, eight oh four. Getting into COVID now. Uh, two thousand twenty. Two eight six, one nine zero. Two thousand nineteen. Two, three, three, seven, six, six. Two thousand eighteen. One, four, five. Four, eight, three. That's out of COVID. Two thousand seventeen. One, two, nine, eight, four, five. Two thousand sixteen, eighty seven thousand four hundred and fifty seven. Two thousand fifteen, one, one, six, five, six, zero, two thousand fourteen. Eighteen thousand four oh two, must have spent something on something. Two thousand thirteen, eighteen thousand four oh eight. Two thousand twelve, that's ten year history. That should be enough. Uh, forty three thousand five hundred and sixteen. That's the ten year history of COVID, so so there's been some incorrect information um floating around on. The reserves uh. Um, about one seventy six. And in addition to that. We do uh on on an annual basis, transfer into reserves for the library. An amount. We don't just give them the operational dollars. We transfer in some money included in that, and in two thousand twenty three, that was sixteen thousand dollars. Thank you very much.
And myself and then uh Counselor Chambers. So I also want to remind council that we've also given back a hundred and eighty thousand dollars over the course of three years. Uh, under uh direction at the time, that was the uh, the intent is to start to, so we reduced our. Uh, asks by sixty thousand dollars, if you'll see in twenty twenty three under transfer from reserves, and that was, uh, I believe, three years or four years. Three years, so a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of that has gone back to the town of Hinton, uh, because we of this. Now, I did, I guess I see clarification. Those numbers that you were mentioning there, that was surplus or the amount that was in the reserves?
The reserves.
So that was the amount in reserves. So that's not surplus. And what we're looking at is see. There's how much a surplus has gone in there to that. And what I'm hearing administration say going back. Is there hasn't been that much surplus even during COVID and we've given that all back. We've had a substantial amount in reserves, yes. But as for the surplus that for the COVID and beyond, we and then we have a plan of two hundred and twenty thousand. Uh, seven hundred and seventy four dollars potentially uh to improve not only the library layout. And services, but also to improve the archive uh space as well. Uh, because that we're looking at putting new shelving in, looking at digitizing everything. Uh, and it's potentially a contract position to put into that. So there is a substantial uh uh. Plan over the next course of two to three years. So again, I reiterate, a hundred and seventy thousand, we can take that from the reserves, but then we're going to be right back where we started next year, so. Um, you know, with the same ask, so I. I hope that council sees the necessity of the library and and the, I don't want to see, personally, I don't want to see two and a half positions. Uh, deleted from that, from that library, because we can't fund, like, we're reducing a hundred and seventy thousand dollars at. Three hundred and some, we can't do programming and staff. Uh, at the hours, that's just not possible. And there's no way we can reduce any more operating paper, pens, all that kind of stuff. Uh, that kind of money means positions, so. Uh. I have Counselor Chambers and then Counselor McGoon.
So through the chair, just a question so that I want questions, but. If the source of the reserve transfer is not from surplus, what, that's my first part of the question, what is the source of that funding then? Like, where where is that coming from? So there's a large transfer into the reserve and it's not out of surplus, what would? Why would that be going there?
I think it was a question to.
Anybody that knows the answer. Administration.
I, I.
Yep, there are only two mechanisms by which money is transferred into the library uh surplus. One is through uh a requisition in the operating budget for surplus transfer. Transfer to surplus, sorry, transfer to reserve. The second way is if, and this is under the contract that the municipality has with the library board. That if there is operating budget surplus at the end of the year, that simply gets transferred into reserve. Because once my funding is allocated to the library, it belongs to the library under under law. So we can't walk back or. The only thing the municipality can do is underfund the requisition and force the library to pull from reserves to fund if they choose to do that. But they could also choose a number of other ways of addressing a shortfall in the requisition. Oh, okay. So if I'm clear. The money technically was from. Surplus that would be in the. Reserve, it just isn't from the COVID surplus.
Yeah, I I'm not sure. Sorry, to the chair, I'll defer to to.
Yeah, yeah, through the chair, uh. You know. Not knowing a lot about the operations of the. The library, but I would say that, you know, what what they transferred to reserve has really been a couple from. Operating surplus grants, uh. As well as the scheduled contributions towards the reserves, because I believe on a yearly basis, I think for. Forever, uh, as a part of our requisition, uh. Through the municipalities, we contribute X amount into into reserves. And then if there is an operational surplus, um, historically that has gone into reserves. Um, and then if there are any grants that would be spent in future years, there's typically. A one to two year delay, um, but. That's, those are really all the only ways that I can see.
Counselor Chambers.
So. What would be of? I I understand the scheduled reserves. But what, so what should that amount be? I guess, you know, like, that that's, you know, so if we're doing that on a manual basis, what what should that look like?
If I may answer that question, being part of the board, that's one thing that we haven't had. The board decided this year that we didn't really have a plan and and how much in reserves, so. What we said is basically, we want to get the reserves down to that ninety three thousand. And and improve the library and then. We've allocated certain dollars a year, a percentage of that sixteen thousand dollars that we would ask for reserves. Uh, from the allocation, so that comes in the uh in the in the ask. And then we would just be asking for that in any surplus from this day forward. Because up to that point, all surplus was going into that reserve. Plus the sixteen thousand. From this day forward, that will never happen again with our current reserve policy that the board uh has uh has a uh. Uh, approved. Uh, everything will go back. It'll just go back into our operating budget for the next year. And that will be included in the ask. So it might be next year lesser, uh, yeah, depending on, but we're trying not to have a surplus anymore, so.
So one more if I.
Yeah.
I may. So if the. Once the money is allocated to. The library because of the way that it's. It's not a restricted reserve that council has any control over. It's up to the control of the library board to deal with that reserve as they see fit. So if we were to underfund this. Current requisition ask. Then it would be the library board that's deciding whether they cut positions or cut capital programs. Is that correct?
It would be, but next year would then be the whole different story because we wouldn't have that hundred and seventy thousand. So we would be going one year. With funding it out of the out of our reserve fund, and then we'd be coming right back. Into uh twenty twenty five budget, asking for an additional hundred and seventy thousand to get back to that number. Because we'd be reducing the amount of ass this year and we won't have that in reserves. We won't have that. So we'll have, it'll it'll solve the problem for this year. And it could potentially reduce taxes, but next year we'll be right back to it. That's that's, unless I'm wrong, but am I? I guess, is that the manager? Proceeds, yes, okay. So I have Counselor McGoon and then Counselor Taylor.
Yeah, again, you know what? I'm thanks, Mr. Chair. For for myself, I'm just trying to keep it a high level. You know what? Got elected in two thousand and twelve, and as Counselor Taylor pointed out with the audited financial statements. We've, we've never had. Um, you know, reserves of that amount with the with the library board, you know, and. Counselor Hawes, you had indicated that, you know, there's a plan to respond to that current situation. Respectfully, I think that response indicates that there's an issue. With that current state, that that current state of those reserves is not ideal. Now, the problem is the people who've fronted that. For the last X number of years, the taxpayers. So I don't, I don't think it's necessarily fair to say, well, you know. Uh, if council doesn't fund to this amount, it's going to result in a decrease of hours. Now, I don't, I don't necessarily buy that. I think. All departments within the town come to us with their optimal budget. During budget time, they say, this is our ask, council, are you willing to fund us that X amount? And we know that there are times when we go to certain departments and we say, no, we actually want you to go back and cut fifteen percent of it. Uh, you know, you need to do the diligence on this. Thanks a lot. That's been a common practice since I've been a counselor. Um. There is absolutely an option to fund a good majority of that through reserves, which would bring you in line, I think. With historical averages, but I don't, I don't want to get into that. Level of the weeds. I think the fact is, these are some pretty high reserves. This isn't uh an absolutely, um. Uh, it's a different budget year for citizens for all sorts of reasons. And I think for this particular year, it's it's not an unreasonable request. Uh. To sort of turn it around as sort of has been indicated by Counselor Taylor. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Taylor and then Counselor Stachik.
Somebody telling us that they have to cut staff because of this is kind of like you asking administration to reduce the budget in the middle of winter, and they reduce the small club budget. Information that uh. They gave us is in this table right here. It is in reserves. In answer to your question, where does the money come from? I would refer you to the August eighth, two thousand twenty three council package that administration gave us. And I'll read from it. The bulk of the large increased reserve occurred in two thousand twenty one and two thousand twenty three to unused salary and benefits. In October two thousand twenty one, a permanent full-time library employee began began a long-term approved leave for the benefit. Provider. Uh, leaving uh two point five months of wages and benefit budget for the unused position. So like I said, it came from. Uh. Uh, unused salary and benefits during the years of COVID, and it came from a uh. Position that through no fault of the library's own was uh. Was was vacant. I highlighted the paragraph to assist you in uh information. Thank you.
Do you have a message?
I think it's sorry, I'm jumping queue, but.
Okay, you get it? Good. Uh, Counselor Stachik.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm a little bit confused by some of the statements that we made earlier. Um, that if this. If this passes and reserve scale reduced by an additional hundred and seventy thousand. That. The library will be back asking for the same four hundred and fifty one thousand dollars next year. I I don't understand that. Why wouldn't they be asking for the four hundred and fifty one thousand next year? If if this doesn't pass, what changes that they're not going to ask for four hundred and fifty thousand in funding?
So if I if I may respond to that is. Because I made a comment.
Yeah, yeah.
So my understanding is we're going to take. The four fifty one and reduce it by a hundred and seventy thousand, making it three hundred and some. We still need the four hundred and fifty one. To to operate the budget as ifs. So we take that from the hundred and seventy thousand in out of reserves. Put it into our operating budget. Then next year. We're going, we we reduce it, yes, to three hundred, but when we come back next year, we're going to need to make up that a hundred and seventy thousand to keep. Operations at the same level as they are now. So what I'm saying is, is it's great to off, sure, it can offset it this year. We we put off the capital projects. But next year, we're still going to need that amount of money. Uh, and that's, I guess, where that's where my comment or statement is coming from.
So if I can follow up then? Okay, so that's completely understood. It's a one-time. Tax. Offset, one-time reduction. In in funding to offset taxation for this year with the expectation. And not direction, just expectation. That that hundred and seventy would then be taken out of reserves so that the library doesn't have to reduce services.
Yes.
One time. That's fully understood. I fully understand that.
Yeah.
I thought maybe there I was missing something that the library board was working on a plan to start utilizing the reserves. To offset the annual. Ask of of um. Funding from the town. It's not the case then.
No.
Okay, thank you.
No. And and I have myself in queue. I appreciate that. And and. It is council's decision. It's your budget. Um. I want to say though, and and to all honesty, I I went to our manager to ask. If we were to reduce by a hundred and seventy thousand and still keep the capital projects. If we still wanted to do that, and we reduced it by a hundred and seventy thousand, then it is fair to say. And and from that, it is positions. Now, if if council wants us to use that, we can as a library board make that decision. We are very mindful that these are contributions by the taxpayers. But this is going to improving. The library and upgrading the library. We, they they've contributed over the years. And yes, it has been through some of the surplus, but it's. But it's going directly back into the services, into a library that has not seen much improvement over. We've seen little bits and pieces, but this is a a an improvement in the family area, it's improvement in the kids area. It's it's, there's some significant projects that the, a lot of time and effort by the manager. But again, I'm not saying that we can't do this one time. I just want to make it clear that we've done this in the past and we've offset through capital or whatever. But then we're right back where we started and I just wanna make it very clear that our ask isn't gonna really change for twenty twenty-five. That's that's what I wanna be clear on, but um. Uh again, I I just, I wanna see the projects move forward. We've we've accumulated this money. We've given back everything that administration come to us and recommended a hundred and four thousand to clear up of the surplus. From all of the the positions that were not fulfilled and we we we've uh offered that. Um so uh and plus a hundred and eighty thousand in the last three years as well on top of that. So we, you know, we've had, we've heard counsel in the past and we've accommodated and we've we've listened and have no problem with that. Um so that's where I'm. CEO.
Thank you, Chair, to the rest of the committee. So. I think it's been addressed, but the one thing that I'll say is, um. You know, and this is my sympathetic administrator uh perspective, but predictability when it comes to funding is important. And I think what I've heard from council is that the intent of this is a one-time reduction to be taken out of reserves to. Write the form of surpluses, but you know, but I I know the effect that that's gonna have on the other side of things when. Um to know that you have to go back and ask for a hundred and seventy thousand more next year without that surety, right? And that becomes very hard for you to plan that that does harm all the al- hurt root because that's going to. Cause some unsurety if you're amongst the staff because you know, you can do it this year, but if we continue on that for next year. That will be numerous positions. So you know, my recommendation is if council wants to go down this way, that we do provide some. That, you know, we would. We would consider bringing that up. I mean, we can't continue, but even a three-year plan as part. Because we do, we are required to provide three-year operational plans, at least to include uh this one time. Drop and then our requirements for the next two years that we increase it uh back to the regular amount, if that's the intent of council. If it's, if it's, if the intent of council is to have it at a lower amount in perpetuity, I think you need, you know, there needs to be. Some predictability for uh for the library, but. Um but we do three-year forecasts already, uh I think including that higher amount. Uh for council to consider while we do pass final budgets would provide some security and some predictability for the library.
Thank you. Uh committee, we are coming up on eight o'clock. We need a motion to extend. That's the appetite. Uh Mayor Neeson.
Put a consensus, can they extend past eight o'clock?
Thank you, Mayor Neeson. Listen, uh council, any discussion? Hey, recall the question and we move to extend past eight o'clock. All those in favor? Thank you. Uh I have councillor Stashak.
Well, I do have, just have a clarification question to the budget. Sorry, the reserve amount that's being down, you know, brings always four hundred and seventy-six. What is it?
Four hundred eighteen.
Hundred and eighteen. Does that include the reduction of a hundred and four from previous motion? Now, so if we include that, we can consider that on that motion's pass. What are we sitting? Three hundred and fourteen?
Think so?
Yeah, it's generated fourteen. Of that three hundred and fourteen, how much is planned for? Capital expenditure or whatever, how much of it's planned to be used currently?
Two hundred and twenty thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. That's the plan.
Okay, so that leaves a difference of ninety-three, two hundred.
Yeah, ninety-two, okay.
That's surprising. I'm good.
Thank you. All right, and I have Mayor Neeson.
Thank you. I wasn't interested in this option at the start, but as we've discussed it, I I'm becoming more open to the idea. But not at the hundred and seventy thousand dollar ask. I think it's reasonable to offset some tax increase from reserves. Been a particularly difficult inflationary year, followed by particularly difficult inflationary year. And and it is up to us to do as as best we can to keep it down. I'd be open to this if if we could amend the number to, say, seventy thousand. I think a seventy thousand number fits in with the reserve number. It leaves them lots of room for operating. And it gives uh gives us some wiggle room next year. If we deplete the reserves or if we force them to deplete their reserves completely, we could find ourselves in a worse situation next year and I'm not super interested in that.
Thank you, Mayor Neeson. Uh I have councillor Taylor and then myself and then councillor Chambers.
Um I'm game to adjust the number a bit, but uh in in answer to councillor Stashak's number, that question. This hundred and seventy-six comes from the presentation that they gave. And it says that it was transferred to operational capital projects. The hundred and four is also off a hundred and eighteen and it still leaves ninety-three thousand dollars for capital projects. This is just a one-time transfer. I think your amount's a little bit low, but I I'm happy to support something.
So I have myself and I I think that's a reasonable ask and and I'm gonna go a little higher for my thoughts. We would have ninety-three thousand dollars left in reserves if we completed the twenty-two hundred and twenty thousand seven hundred and seventy-four. We're asking for sixteen thousand dollars in our reserves for twenty twenty-four. If we were to say ninety thousand dollars, we'll empty that account, pay the one two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. In in expenditure and and I I'm still, that hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. That is capital expenditures that we were going to do. I think they added extra is that uh that contract position. Potentially, they got it up to two hundred and twenty. So, but I'm I'm I would be in favor. Then it's, then we are, we are even. Uh everything is added there and we'll work at it as a board to get another sixteen in. We'll work ourselves up to next capital projects. This two twenty can get us a a long ways in in a joint unit. Um and then. Then we, and we have the reserve policy, so there won't be any surpluses going back into reserves. It'll be simply a sixteen thousand dollar allocation every year in our ask. And if we need more, then we ask in the allocation. If we need an extra amount for a project that comes up, we ask for it in the future and uh then council's decision as to how much. But I would be in favor uh potentially of that, but I'm definitely not of a hundred and seventy. Thank you. I have councillor Chambers.
I clarified, you might.
Uh sure. What amount are you good for? Ninety thousand.
You're good if uh we get back ninety thousand. Is that what you just said?
If my, if I understand, we can still spend two twenty on all the capital projects. Keep the ask at four fifty-one and we give back ninety thousand, which will pretty much empty the reserve account except for the sixteen thousand. So that's what, that's what I would uh. Would be hoping to potentially. Councillor Chambers and then councillor McGoon.
I'll through the chair. So I guess what I'm struggling to to get my head around and not that's our job to get into the the weeds on exactly. But I I don't know the impact of these projects and the impact of delaying them. And I think we know I'm not a fan of just picking random numbers of like, you know, out of the sky. Is there any indication? You know, from you of what level of. You know, so you have two hundred and twenty thousand dollar projects, you know, we. Cutting one seventy, if if it was cutting projects and not cutting positions, let's say. Um you know, which, what type of project would you not be able to do and what would you still be able to do and what? And maybe like, maybe that's not something you can answer right now, but and what is the overall impact of having to delay some of these things for an additional year or two while you build that up? Cause that without having that information, it's hard for me to quantify the impact to the taxpayer versus the impact to the library operations and the whole.
I believe the manager's prepared with what the projects are uh to give some clarity.
Yeah, uh so through the chair, uh through the chair to the rest of the council, um. Basically, the what the projects we had planned, um they were accommodating some of the needs and requests we had gone from some relation. So particularly for families um using uh the children's area, a lot of that furniture um has been there since. Um I think the renovation started. I have an employee who's been there for thirteen years and he can't remember a time before that furniture. Like, you can't remember any uh updates to any of that. So what we're looking at essentially is we have outdated children's furniture in the kids' area that makes for not very family-friendly um library. Uh we have a lot of families that make use of that space and we'll make sure that we're accommodating um all of their needs. Um we're also looking at improving the study areas. We're getting an increase in students that are coming in. Um and they're using up our study rooms, but there's not a lot of other spaces for them to quiet, private area to study with. Um more collaborators, collaborative spaces, um. As I was mentioning, the archives, we're looking at improved shelving, uh particularly ones that are mobile and can um accommodate more material in the archives. Uh cause right now we're basically at capacity, uh as well as the archivist to help with some of the digitizing projects that we. Um we recently got, um we acquired the Peterson papers from the Northern Rockies Museum. Um and um right now, the capacity that we have is to put them in yard vibes. Um there's not a lot of capacity to make them more accessible to uh people painting. Um along with the rest of the materials that we have in there and we're just at capacity with the research requests that we get that has to go through one of our employees. Um to to accommodate those research requests, so. As far as delaying those projects, we could certainly, our operations would run as they kind of have been. Um but what we're looking at is the lack of improvement, so we're not gonna be improving that access to any of the historical information that we have. Uh we're not actually improving any of the areas that, you know, people are coming back in the space after COVID and they don't have a lot of spaces to actually go to. Um so our operations could maintain as normal, um. How long it would take to get those products done in the future, whether it's one or two years, I I expect it to be probably a lot more than that. Uh and I think that my perspective on this whole situation was essentially that um the money that we accumulated in those reserves. That we got that through. That money was intended for library services essentially. And so, you know, it absolutely amassed to a level that is, you know, unacceptable essentially. And we should have had a plan in place um prior to getting to that point, but we have that plan now. And my intention was to reduce it to a more acceptable level and to use some of that money for what it was initially intended for, which was for library services. And so what I saw is these projects, um while they have seemed like they came up pretty quickly, they were projects that had been on our minds and had been. Explored throughout the year and um these are the ones that I see as the needs for our library and, you know, I didn't come up with anything that I think the library couldn't use. Get late, so.
Uh through the chair, so. Theoretically, if this hundred and seventy thousand dollars was cut, you would still have fifty thousand dollars within their, plus the ninety-three. You'd have theoretically fifty thousand dollars because your ask was two twenty. Or or what you guys had transferred out of reserves to use for capital and operation programs is two twenty, is that correct? And so if we deducted one seventy, you would still theoretically have fifty thousand dollars plus ninety-three thousand in reserves. Plus sixteen thousand dollars that your ask is this year to add to reserves. Right?
Yeah. I believe that's accurate, yeah.
So, sorry if I made, so you still could do some capital projects this year, just not all of them.
Councillor McGee and then councillor Rice.
Yeah, and you know what? Councillor Chambers, because I think that introduces my my line of questions and then my my position statement. Do you have specific numbers for me on how many students haven't been able to study and or how many patrons haven't been able to access historical papers?
Oh, through the chair, uh I don't have those specific numbers.
So here's my concern. So that with, this is an exceptional budget year, to be certain. Um the assumption that I've heard is that, you know, the hundred and seventy thousand dollars in capital uh investiture. Uh it's a must and if it doesn't happen this year, it absolutely has to happen next year. But I'm sorry, respectfully, from the description of those projects. For me, um in terms of trying to determine what the allocation is that we're going to assign to the library. Those those don't ring as emergency essentials to operations in delivering the services that we currently do. People can still study there. We can still deliver historical papers. I I feel, and it's a feeling, it's only for myself, that these aren't projects that potentially we could talk about by sitting down with the library board and council. And figuring out a long-term capital plan over, you know, the next X number of years. So I I don't subscribe to the notion that the one hundred and seventy thousand dollars has to happen this year or it has to happen next year. That this could be determined over a longer period of time. And so again, I'm actually, I'm not willing to support the amendment on the table. Uh because again, I I feel like, uh you know, just hacking and slashing, trying to pick a number, isn't the best approach. I think we could sit down at a later date, uh talk about a a joint capital plan so that it's fully transparent. Because ultimately, we have to bring that back to the citizens and say, well, you know, your taxes were eight percent this year, but you saw that the. Uh you know, the library built some updated study rooms and, you know, enhancements to research archives. Somebody's gonna hold me accountable to that. They're gonna say, really? I paid eight percent in taxes and you guys built a few extra rooms and we understand it's more complicated than that. But that's the pressure from the community is having to respond to citizens. And I don't know how comfortable I am having that conversation. I think there's a a middle-of-the-road approach that we can look for and and I still support the original motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh councillor Race, then myself.
Thank you, Mr. So, um does the library pursue grant? So I'm not seeing revenue from buying grants.
Uh through the chair, um we have been in increasing our um pursuing of grants. And so we did actually get one this past year, uh twenty-five thousand dollars and I'm certainly trying to um. You know, go after more grants to help supplement uh these budgets. I did try to get one for the archivist position and fortunately I wasn't successful. Um so that's certainly something I'll consider going forward as well. Thank you.
So I myself, and and I hear everybody's the comments and I I don't disagree with them. I I understand. You know, that and and no, they don't have to be done right away. They don't. Um they are definitely long time overdue. It would be nice to have them. The area is old, the area is, you know, again, the the furniture, we had a little bit of improvement in furniture over the past, but. I mean, they don't need to be and we can, as a board, me being part of that, I mean, I have a dual responsibility as a board to advocate, but also as a councillor too. But we can go back. I I wouldn't agree with a joint capital. That's our, that's our responsibility. If council makes a decision as to how much we allocate, it's up to them, the board, where that money goes and and to uh uh the capital. And we can go back as a board and sit down with uh with Shannon and and prioritize from that list. What we can accomplish if if this consensus were to be achieved, we can do that, you know, that's not a problem. I guess, I I I just again, and I think there is that, I would prefer if there is also a motion that this is a one-time year. Uh this is a one-year offset taxes for twenty twenty-four. So moving into twenty twenty-five, there's some uncertainty there because I agree with councillor CEO Panasic. You know, you reduce it by that amount, we offset it. What stops it from continuing? So I'm I'm in favor if if this is what council's uh 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 decision to 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 achieve that hundred and seventy. But I I I definitely would like, hopefully someone to make a motion that it's a just a one set offer, one-time offer. Get this, you know, and and offset taxes that way, um continue with the projects as we can. But I I I want to somehow assurance that twenty twenty-five, you know, we've got then the budget that we need to run the library, so. That's my thoughts. Councillor Stashak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question and then uh likely another. Uh my question, I don't, there isn't actually an amendment, proposed amendment on the table right now, right?
No.
I just want a clarification on that. And then uh I'd like to see consensus of committee to limit debate to one more opportunity per councillor to speaker. Ask a question if they choose to.
Agreed. I I. So it's a motion. Yeah, uh okay, in motion to uh to uh limit debate to one more comment. From the the floor before we bring this to consensus, so although any question?
Although, any question, comment? Not available, so bold and paper. There we go, okay, Counselor Stash, do you have a comment on the receiving notes, okay?
Can I just offer one point?
Yeah.
Uh, just an apology, I, I apologize to the mayor, I thought you would put forward a motion, I'm certain, my bad.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, all right, seeing none, no amendments, then we will call to question then. Uh. Lady Campbell.
Thank you, uh, gonna call the question, the committee seek consensus, the town had hit and reduced the library budget by a hundred and seventy thousand. From the amount requested by the library of four hundred and fifty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-six. Dollars and be placed. Into general revenue. Okay, yeah. Uh, please vote now.
I'm in favor. I can't do it with them. Okay, thank you. All right, and that is, uh, carried with, uh, Mayor Nissen, Nissen and, uh, myself against. Listen, fair. Thank you, counsel, and thank you, Counselor Stash, for that. Okay, thank you, I think we're. Uh, Shannon, my re-manager. Counselor Reese.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, to administration for coming into this meeting, we're coming into this meeting. This one spreadsheet is saying that within the. With a, um. On the property tax of six point two, so is that.
Sorry, if you can, what, what is that question?
Yeah.
Counselor Reese.
Coming into this committee meeting.
Uh-huh.
Our spreadsheet. Is showing, um. Actually, you know, six point two, is that correct, if somebody keep in front of.
Uh. Through the chair members of council, coming into the meeting, we have a percentage of seven point six percent. Uh, I believe we would be looking at around. Six point seven with the first, uh. Let's not, I could do some quick math, it's like five point three.
Yeah, through the chair. I have five point four, but I. Certainly could be inaccurate and one-way shit before, but, uh, but, uh, broad strokes, we are looking at four five point.
Okay, counsel. You got one matter done, Counselor McGee?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chair, I'm just looking for clarification, uh, administration on, and I'm sorry, I will try and get the page. Problem switching back and forth. On the original budget package that was sent out. It is page. Ten of twenty-four, so I apologize, counsel, that's the Friday budget package we got, it's a spreadsheet that says town in draft. Twenty twenty-four operating budget, budget revenues and expenses, there's some notations on it.
Yeah, that's. Right, could, committee, could I address those notation, uh, before you go into that? If there was ever a day I should have put down my pencil and walked away from my desk, it was that day. Your year-to-date actuals in the first column, which remained unfortunately unlabeled. Are correct, but the forecast amounts bringing us to the proposed surplus are incorrect, I missed. Including the final payment that we have for school requisitions, so we are going to be. Not at a six hundred thousand dollar surplus. And my extreme apologies, and I still do not have my feet completely under me, but I'm here to support my team.
So if I could follow up on that, still, Mr. Chair? And, and you know, that's totally okay with me, but I guess, uh, in principle, what I was curious about was. Whatever that forecast surplus ends up at, at end of year. So, you know, on December thirty-first. I, I hope, I know what the, the impact of that is, but can you elaborate, does that, um? Does council then have a decision to make on what to do with that, that surplus moving into? You know, the future, whether going to reserves, whether going to operating, et cetera, et cetera.
Oh, committee, absolutely. And that was. My expectation at the end of twenty twenty-two, moving into twenty twenty-three. We unfortunately had some struggles with our auditor and timing and we had a death in the family. So didn't come out and we were very much pressurized to have everything completed by May one. We have been assigned a new auditor and, um, I'm looking forward to a much. Better year as the new auditor has actually been out for interim audit testing already.
May I see one further follow-up to that? And, and again, if, if administration doesn't have an answer, totally fine, I'm just curious. Um, do we have either A, an indication of where that number might be even approximately? And it, that's fine, again, if the answer is no, uh, and if the answer is no, do we have an idea of approximately when we might know? What our forecast surplus, surplus deficit is for this, this financial year?
If committee would give me the latitude, I would like to go back, maybe with my numbers and bring it out to next, uh. What do you mean, next, next committee meeting? It's certainly very much.
That's ungreat, thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Just for point of clarification, the next discussion that we're going to be having on these topics is Thursday of this week. So everybody's reminded of that.
Yeah. CEO can ask.
Through the chair, um. Just a few things for, uh, you know, as we work through, I just want counsel to keep in mind that there's gonna be a few things and. You know, we've introduced midterm budget adjustments, and I think it's an important process for a few reasons. Number one, we actually have our budget actual. Uh, variance, so we actually know, you know, we don't have to, because the forecast is. You know, uh, and educated prediction of where we're gonna land, right, but, you know, we still have. Uh, at the time, these numbers were generated, but months ago, there's a lot that happened within there, uh. See, the other thing is with midterm budget adjustments, we have the ability to be accurate on our assessment amounts, um, instead of, you know, this. As we said today, we really don't know what those are gonna be, uh, the assessments that have been included in. This budget is last year's, uh. We all hope that assessments are gonna increase, uh, manageably over the years. Uh, and the other thing, that I think one of the major, um, things that we. We don't know yet is LGFM as well as the local government system framework, um. We know there's more money in the total pot from the province, we don't know. How they're going to, what formula they're going to use to distribute that money. Now, we've got any positive indications from the pop, uh, from the province. Where they said, we think you're gonna be happy with how LGFM, but, you know, that's. That's, uh, again, a prediction, but, you know, so there's a few key items that we'll. Change, you know, whatever number we probably land on at the end of the day, before we actually set the tax rates, before we set the. They'll have all this information available to us.
Thank you, CEO. Uh, Counselor Taylor.
What are the reasons to think that the assessments will increase?
Through the chair, um. No reason. Pretty much, you know, there's no, there's no, uh, specific indication.
So we better do our work here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, committee, uh. Any other, uh? Matters for the twenty twenty-four draft operating budget, Mayor?
Yep, I, I have some questions through the chair to committee administration. I have some questions for administration regarding the utilities. Situation, I see that we've got a projected deficit for both sewer and waste management. Where do those deficits get funded from, is that contributing to the tax increase of this state?
He said, I don't have a deficit, yes, it would.
Is there, uh, sorry. Oh, there is, is there a reason to suspect that those numbers are going to be different at the end of the year? And, uh. Projected.
Based on my inability to focus on Friday, I'm wanting to go back and look at all of them that I put down from the estimate.
So with that, if I may, I'd like to see consensus that committee direct administration to return with. Utility rate adjustments to eliminate any projected deficits in sewer and waste management.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just waiting to get that up there, if you wanna. Those, uh.
Yes, the committee seek consensus to direct administration. To return to the budget process. Updated utility rates. To eliminate the projected deficits in sewer and waste.
In the, it's in sewage, not utility. Deficit.
No, then in utility and.
In sewage.
One stage, sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I had Counselor Taylor and Chambers in the main queue, are good to speak to now, yeah, okay. Sorry, the CEO sort of.
Through the chair, um, if I could, I believe Mr. McLaughlin is prepared to speak on this. Um. Through the chair to, uh, all committee, uh, so you did have some utility rate information, uh, in your package that I, I put together. Uh, which I'm assuming some of this is, uh, coming, coming out of. Uh, so just to, uh, give a brief summary there, the, the water currently is, uh. At a projected surplus, uh, of six seventy-four, and then. Sewer is, uh, at a, uh, a projected deficit, now, uh. Built, built in, into this is, uh, some, some assumptions on where the, the. You, the agreements, uh, with Mondi, uh. It, and, and so it really, this, that. Uh, surplus or deficit number really depends on where those agreements end up. Uh, so that, that has a, the ability to affect that sewer number. Uh, and then on the waste management part, uh, we're actually, uh. Sort of making money on the garbage collection. But then our, uh, recycling has no revenue coming from it, and so we are, uh, so when you factor in recycling, that's what puts us into the deficit. Uh, now, one thing that I want counsel to, uh, consider is that what is coming is EPR. Where the province is going to be instituting recycling onto the, uh, end product producers. And so, uh, although I don't. In, I don't anticipate impacts in twenty twenty-four, I do impacts, uh. Proceed that there probably impacts in twenty twenty-five, so we may have our recycling costs reduced. Coming in twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six, um. And, and so, I just want. You to consider though, that information when you're making this decision.
Uh, Mr. McLaughlin, you said information, where in the package would we find that information, if we're looking towards?
Um, through the chair, this was provided at, uh, this information provided for that, uh, first budget. Okay, yeah, so we can, uh. Only include that in the package, but, um. But in short, we are off, we are currently offsetting our tax rates. Through our utilities, uh, through the water at six hundred and seventy-four thousand, uh.
We're surplus, we're surplus.
Sorry, did I say, did I say deficit, my apologies, so, six hundred and seventy-four is offsetting our, uh. Our taxes, and we are, uh, losing a hundred and fifty-two thousand when it comes to sewer, so, uh. So we are a little bit short on sewer, we are a little bit rich on the. Uh, utilities, are we looking at bringing everything up to an operational break even, which would be a needed amendment to our sewer utility rates?
So I have, uh, Counselor Taylor, you in the queue, you wanna be in queue on this consensus, correct? Yeah, uh, Counselor McGee and then Mr. Mayor, uh, so Counselor Taylor.
Um. Yeah, so sewer hundred and fifty-two thousand. The information you previously sent said that sewer and, uh, waste was, uh, three hundred and seven thousand. That's no longer correct?
Uh, if you.
Or you've modified that?
If you add them together, that, that, that is correct, you had sewer, sewer and waste together, your number's correct. Yeah, and so I would just clarifying what was in those numbers, so in this, in the sewer number. We've assumed that we're going to have to pay something. Uh, in, in for Mon, for the Mondi agreement, and that, you know, those aren't, haven't been finalized, there's, there's still out there, so. Uh, until we know that, that number could change quite a bit depending on what's in that agreement, so I've made assumptions. For that one fifty-two, and then the waste management, I was just pointing out that, you know, our actual garbage collection. Is doing better than break even, we're making money on garbage collection, but when you add the force of four hundred and fourteen. Cost of running the recycle people, that puts us in a deficit. So if you were asking us to come back and increase those costs, I just wanted to point it out that. You would be increasing the cost of garbage collection to pay for recycling. And I just. Wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Oh, are you doing?
I'd like to, I, I do support what you're saying. Um, that getting to a cost recovery on sewer, at least, I'm not sure about waste, is a good idea. And, uh, the concern is the amount and how long we spread it over. So the burden on the taxpayer isn't that much, and that we have a little bit of information coming. That we're not sure of on the cost, so, you know, maybe if we could make a, uh, dollar amount that we'd like to go ahead and. Get closer to cost recovery like fifty, seventy thousand dollars for. Sewer and water or sewer. Then that, that takes into account the fact that, uh, we're gonna have some adjustments, but still, we'd like to move inch closer over a two or three year period of time to. Uh, full cost recovery. And it's excellent news that we got a six hundred thousand dollar surplus. In water, and then that is built up to a six million dollar, uh. Reserve account, because that's what the capital adjustment in your utility bills that everybody complains about is doing, which is, which is a really good thing, actually.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor and Counselor McGee, and then Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair, I guess my question for administration is, do you feel like post, um, Mondi? Uh, like wrapping up all the details on that finalized agreement, that's going to give us a better idea of what cost recovery might look like?
CEO?
Yeah, through the chair, I, I think we'll have a much clearer picture, so we do intend it twenty-four, once our costs are established, once we have. Some clarity on the future of what we're going to be looking at over the next X amount of years that we would sit down. We would look at where our rates are at, make a plan, because we know, um. If we have a hundred million dollar assets in the future, that we need to start planning for that today. Uh, so all of those, that more fulsome discussion, once we have a better idea of what. Where we're gonna land when it comes to operational costs, our future capital needs, I think that'll become a lot more clear, you know. You know, near the end of the first quarter of twenty twenty-four, that, uh, we would be able to have that discussion.
So, so if I may then speak to the motion, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I think I, I'm certainly supportive of the motion, I, it's, it's a, a great thing to look at. But I feel like we'll probably need some of the information post that discussion to. That discussion to flesh out that fully, so I'm just. Return to the budget process. So I guess the only concern I have is, um, if administration feels like. If this motion succeeds, if they're able to accomplish that, or if it's sort of. Is it odds with not knowing how the the negotiations are gonna work out?
CEO.
Through the chair. You know, it it's difficult to be always one hundred percent accurate when we're dealing with these things, especially when there's a lot of unknowns. Things beyond our control, but, you know, I I certainly think we can bring forward projections, which is really what the budget's all about is. You know, where we project to land and what we project we will need in order to break even on that. Uh, and I think we could be. I think we can be reasonably accurate with the information that we have today and at least move that into a positive and move it into a positive direction.
Happy to support that, Mr. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, so Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Uh. Yeah, and through the shared committee, uh, the intent is to get more information so that we can have an intelligent conversation on the utility rates going forward. Uh, I do see, uh, projected deficits in in sewer and I think we should be at zero cost for that. Waste management, I do understand that our deficit comes from recycling, but in a number of communities, uh. Waste management is what pays for recycling. Uh, when I pay the utility bill to throw out garbage, while I'm paying that utility bill to do the recycling as well, that's the society that we've we've have. Uh, it just is what it is. I think that, uh, looking at the report we have on our future, uh, utility and asset management. Uh, requirements, we're going to have to look at adjusting our utility rates to to make up for some future. Uh, large scale capital costs and, uh, I think this is a reasonable time to start that discussion. Uh, but this motion or this consensus is really to get more information so we can have an informed discussion during this budget process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, we're committing, uh. Counsel J.
It's not really, doesn't say exactly that. Do do, will we have that information back in time to be able to adjust the budget? Is this something we're gonna get back late in two thousand twenty four?
No, no, uh, through the chair. We will have this information that's specifically requested by the seventh. Uh, by the seventh for our budget meeting.
Oh, I see that information right there.
The information that's being requested. I was talking in twenty four. A more fulsome discussion about all of, uh, the different assets and what are.
Oh, I see, I see, I understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee. Seeing nothing else, then we'll call the next question that committee, if we can see it today. Thank you. All right, uh, going to call the question, the committee seek consensus to return to the budget process, updated utility rates to eliminate the. Uh, projected deficit in sewage and waste management. Please vote. And that is carried announced.
I'm in favor.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, uh, Counsel McGoon, or actually, sorry, uh, Counsel Taylor first and then Counsel Chambers back in the main queue.
Oh, no, I'll, I'm good.
You're good, okay? Okay, Counselor Chambers.
So, uh, through the chaired administration, just back on a previous point, will we have the, know the assessment values? Before we have to decide what to do with the potential surplus? For allocation purposes? Will they be kind of neck and neck tirelessly wise?
Probably very, uh, to, oh, many, uh, surplus about should be known a little bit ahead of, but everything should. Happen within Q one of twenty twenty four. Our, uh, assessment numbers have to be submitted to the. Communal auditor for before February twenty eighth and historically our file comes back to us from our assessor mid to late March.
Thank you. Okay, Counsel McGee.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I guess either a point of personal privilege or are we okay for a break?
Yeah, we we can take a, uh.
Oh, wait, wait. May I?
Yes.
Just how long are we going to go on? Like, we have another day and if you've had a a long night. And we don't think as well when it gets later, I'm just concerned. So we don't make as good decisions late at night.
So if I may, I mean, I I mean, we can have a motion, but I mean. I'd like to, personally, I'd like to take a break and see what else we can hammer out, see where we're at in about nine o'clock. Uh, and make a decision after that and then, because, uh, I do realize we do have December seventh, but. If we also want more information, I think this is the time to ask so we can get it on the seventh potentially. Those are my thoughts, uh, so I don't know what the rest of kind of our committee feels.
That's good, thank you.
Okay, so let's take a seven minute break.
Okay, so let's take a seven minute break and then make it.